And softball coach to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
All right.
United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Get to start, Ms. D'Nello.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I get the distinct pleasure of leading off this evening for our state champions softball team. I get a little choked up whenever they give me this honor because I was on the Southington High School softball team when I was in high school. And it's just such fond memories that I have and it's just an exciting time. And so, I know he's laughing because he knows he'll get all choked up. But what I wanted to say is there's a couple of things I always say about Southington softball. And one is that it takes a lot of skills to win a state championship, but it also takes some luck. You've got to make sure you're all healthy, right? You've got umpires to understand the rules of the game when your girls are playing. But more so when it comes to Southington softball, I really believe that winning breeds winning. And my guess is that many of you started your days playing over at Panther Park, probably pick a day at the Lions when you were five or six years old. Moved your way up and you looked up to those Southington High School players from the time you might have been on the Lightning, you may have been playing AAU somewhere. But your parents were taking you to those high school games and you were looking up to those girls and watching them win championships, year, state championships year after year. And you are now those young ladies that those little girls at Panther Park are looking up to. And you really should be proud of yourself. And you will look back someday and have fond memories of your time at Southington High School and on that softball field. I had the honor of winning two state championships when I was in high school, nineteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-five. My sister's here who won two state championships in eighty-five and eighty-six. She was also an all-state Southington softball player. I have two things in my closet after all these years of leaving high school. My high school yearbook and in the corner of my closet is my state championship jacket. That I proudly wore around town when I was in high school and let me tell you, we thought we were pretty cool. The Southington softball girls, the basketball team won many state championships back then, and the football players all had their leather jackets on. They didn't have many state champions, but us softball girls had our years proudly on our jackets. I'd like at this point to turn it over to your athletic director, Mr. Rissler, who I know would like to introduce your coach and the team. So congratulations, girls. You're welcome.
We want to thank Ms. D'Nello and her sisters that are here tonight from the alumni crew. So that was fantastic. So the theme of this year was a tradition defended. And believe me, this was such an exciting year, twenty-five straight wins. Incredible and unbelievable championship game at West Haven High School over a very, very good Fairfield Love Low team. Four-three on a walk-off in the last inning. I have a little stat to throw out about Coach Hernandez. She's won four state championships as head coach, one as an assistant with Southington. And every one of those games has been an unbelievable game, like a one-run game. So congratulations, it was just sensational. And that is the most championships of any team in softball in the state of Connecticut by a large margin. So that was the nineteenth in the program's history. So congratulations to the girls, they did a terrific job. I did want to just say briefly, and I'm going to get Coach Hernandez up here in a second, and just say that preparation was what I saw this year from the girls. They were prepared. The night before the championship game, I happened to go to practice. And some of the girls heard I talked about this at the banquet, but it's so, it's so meaningful to me to say it again, that the preparation that this team put in. Coach looked at them before they left practice that night, got them in a huddle on the eve of the championship game and said, "Girls, you are prepared. You don't have to be anxious. You know what to do. Win or lose, I'm very proud of you." And I saw the girls and a calm came over them, just a relaxation. And believe me, they needed every part of it because the esteemed sportswriter of the Hartford Current, Lori Riley, she's been reporting for over thirty years. And her paragraph, open paragraph was, "This game had everything in it you can imagine." And it did, including us Southington falling behind by a run in the top of the seventh. But like they did all year long, they looked adversity in the face and you can't win twenty-five games in a row without overcoming adversity. And my goodness, they did it again. It was an incredible game and I'll never forget it. It was, of course, I'm a little biased, but it was, it's going to go down in history as just an incredible game. And for those of you that are interested in seeing it, we'll try to arrange to get, to get you if you weren't able to be there because it was, it was so exciting. So I took up the time for Coach Hernandez, so I'd like to introduce Davina now to come up here and introduce the players who are with us tonight. And then Ms. Carmody has a presentation to make to you. All right, come on up, Davina.
Hello, thank you so much for having us again. We apologize, there's more than half of our team is out of state right now at tournaments, traveling for their, what we call showcase seasons where they play in front of college coaches. So unfortunately, a lot of the girls couldn't make it, but they are really appreciative and thank you guys so much for having us. Just to say a few words about the season, like Mr. Rissler said, it was a season of where we really wanted to obviously defend our tradition. But one of the things that we wanted to do was make sure that we had fun. Fun was the goal of this season. Every single day, the girls would be smiling, laughing, dancing. But once they got between those lines, they were pretty unstoppable. We had many games this year where we were down or where teams scored. And our motto the whole year was to get it back and more. So get that run back that they just got plus more, and that's exactly what they did all year long. So we have one of our players here who was one of the heroes, Lauren, who tied, raise your hand, Lauren. Lauren tied the game up with, so Lauren, Lauren got on base. She got a hit up the middle and she ended up driving in the tying run. And then ended up, you know, putting us in a position to win the game. It was without a doubt one of the craziest softball games I've ever been a part of. The atmosphere was just unbelievable. It was so loud, they could not hear me. I had to use visual signals because it was so loud. And it was a beautiful day and, you know, they came out on top. And these, these girls have worked so hard, you know, for the last, and I think is the difference is our players, every single one of them, works hard out of season. And that's where I think we had the advantage as a high school team. Not everybody is as lucky to have girls that will dedicate themselves in the offseason to do well and prepare themselves. And like Mr. Rissler said, the last practice before our game, I just, I said to them, one of my college coaches' favorite lines, and that's, "Preparedness equals peace of mind." So I just let them know that, you know, whether you're going into a softball game, an exam, a job interview, when you're prepared, you feel a lot more calm and it gives you that peace of mind. So going into that game, they were ready and they did it. I knew they were going to do it too. Even in that last inning, Coach Michelle and I brought them together and said, "We know you're going to win this. We know you're going to at least get one run tied up." We know we're really good at going into extra inning games too. So I just wanted to start by having our coach and our players that are here come on up. Our assistant coach, Michelle Boisvert, she has been with us since I started here at Southington. She's, Coach Michelle is the wisdom behind our program. She is, we're just such a great combo because we all bring different parts to our, to our girls. And part of what Coach Michelle does is every, before every game, she gets them ready by pitching to them. And they're very superstitious, so I'm not allowed to pitch. But it's just, we had so much fun this year and we're just really very grateful that you guys invited us. So I wanted to call the girls up that are here. I'll go, I have them in order here, but I'll go so that you guys can not have to, it'll go in order. So first, come on up Stella Blanchard, one of our pitchers. Next up, Nicole Zuba. Next is Elise Picard. Next is Lily Murphy. Maddie Nopirskey. Alyssa Ulet. And the record female athlete of the whole year, Lauren Verilli. Lauren's very humble. I like to always embarrass her. And out of our group of girls that are here, Lauren is the only senior. We have a lot of young talent coming back. Hopefully, we'll see you guys next year, hopefully.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, he loves holding them, so he'll hold on to it like, oh, great, yeah. Girls, just see over there so everybody can get a picture of you. Go all the way over, there you go. So proud of you. This is a certificate of excellence for the Southington High School Blue Knights. Having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Southington Public Schools. Is hereby awarded certificate of excellence for girls softball class LL softball state champions spring two, twenty twenty-one. In witness whereof the seal of the Southington Board of Education, the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson, and the Superintendent of Schools. Are here on do, affixed on this twenty-fourth day of June twenty twenty-one. Congratulations.
Yes, holding the jacket, yeah, holding the jacket, yup, 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 yup. How are you, Michelle?
I should also men, I should also mention that the girls won the first ever conference championship this year that the league ever had. So they have that trophy up there too.
Somebody get a shot of that, please.
No, not at all.
What position were you? Good girl. I know.
Thank you. Congratulations, girls.
Thank you, Coach, and to our players, I hope you have a wonderful summer and congratulations on a truly amazing accomplishment. Mr. Rissler is now, and I'm not sure who was able to make it tonight, but we also want to take a moment to recognize some of our CIAC class double L individual event state champions this evening. So as much as it's a wonderful accomplishment to, you know, to win as a team, it's equally wonderful sometimes to set individual goals and achieve them. And so, Mr. Rissler, you're going to recognize them this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Medancy, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say before I introduce the individual state champions tonight, that this has really been a season of gratitude this year with the athletes coming back. And participating this year, and I want to thank the board for all their support. Ms. Carmody and all your esteemed colleagues, and also Mr. Pepe in his final year as principal, and of course, Mr. Medancy and Mr. Canelin retiring now. So thank you for all your support. So like the softball team, we have many of our state champions in other sports that are out already participating throughout the state. Matter of fact, the, I'm going to announce the four-by-one-hundred relay team that won the state championship this year. And it has a very interesting story attached to that. The first member of that relay team who couldn't be here tonight because she's playing in a softball event in New Jersey tonight, there's a connection here, I'll make it quickly. She played softball actually her freshman softball year before going to throw javelin and running track this year for, in the relay. But she actually played for Davina's program and got recruited by the University of Hartford. So she's going to be playing softball at Hartford, but this year, she actually was the state champion in javelin. So let's give her a round of applause for that. And, and she was part of that four-by-one-hundred relay team. Now, this year, Kayla was in two sports. She was in indoor and outdoor track. And there were, the other three members of that relay that were state champions that also couldn't be here tonight are Abby Seaw, who's a member of the girls soccer team. She's at a soccer tournament tonight in Danbury. So let's give her a round of applause for Abby, state champion. And then also Shannon Litchfield, also, she's a three-sport athlete. She was a member of this team, which by the way, set the school record in the four-by-one-hundred relay this year. So congratulations to Shannon. Also, the fourth met leg of that team was run by freshman Riley, Riley Prazo. So many of you probably know Riley. Congratulations to her as a state champion as well. And we are fortunate to have with us tonight representing the boys' track team, Aiden Chazeno. Aiden, if you could come up, please. Aiden won the state championship this year in the pole vault for the class double L division. He, he won the conference championship. He had not lost a pole vault meet all, he was first in every one of his meets. And then he finished, the only time he didn't finish first was when he was tenth in the state open, but that was terrific. He's tenth overall. That wasn't your best performance. Okay, well, yeah, a true competitor. But anyways, congratulations, Aiden, for an unbelievable season and winning the pole vault in the class double L division. So I want to congratulate all five of those individual spring sports champions. And Aiden, we'll say you represented the girls here tonight too. All right, so maybe we get a quick picture of Aiden over here if anybody can maybe shoot one of them.
So thank you, everyone, for joining our celebration of excellence this evening. We'll take a quick recess. No recess? You're going right into it? Oh, okay. Yeah, you know, the bosses are here, things get to run them up.
Continuing with our celebration of excellence. Is she down here next to me? Tonight, we say goodbye to Sherry. This is her last meeting. I really did teach her everything she knows. Uh, not really. I can't even begin to tell you what she has meant to the Southington Board of Education. You can just ask her any question you want financially or a number, and she knows it. She's just a humble, wonderful woman. And we on the Board of Education wish her the best with her husband and his family in her retirement. We are going to miss her tremendously. I remember watching Sherry and her sister with her mom and dad playing softball and baseball. I mean, I'm really old soul. She was a young kid and I watched her. And the same enthusiasm that she played sports with, she brought to the Board of Education. Are we going to miss her? I don't even know how to tell.
So I wasn't planning on saying anything. My office gave me a wonderful party last week and I was better prepared than I am obviously this evening. I do want to thank members of the Board of Education for all your support over the years. The administrative leadership team has been wonderful to work with. But I will say one of the things I didn't say last week that I'd like to share tonight is that working in the same district with my husband and sister. It's really easy to be the sister of the beloved Mrs. Chapman. And it's really easy to work in the district with the cool, being the wife of the cool Mr. D or Coach D'Nello. But I know it wasn't as easy for them to be the sister or the spouse of the Director of Business, Sherry D'Nello at times. I wasn't, I know you'd be surprised to hear, I wasn't always the most popular person and making the most popular decisions in the district. So I know for them it wasn't as easy and so I appreciate your support over the years, both of you. And thank you.
I won't bring up the same issue that I brought up last Friday. I think I embarrassed you enough last week. Sherry, I can remember roughly twenty-one years ago when we introduced you. I think I'm the only board member left that was there that night. And, and it really didn't, it really didn't sink in until last week when we were at the little retirement party for you. I really wasn't looking forward to this day. It's been a long haul. You've been a shining light for this board for many, many years, your whole career here. You're going to be missed, your shiny personality, your sharp wit, your sharp pencil, your all your numbers. I know Jen's got a tough, tough position to fill, okay, with you leaving. I have a lot of confidence in her. She'll get there. I know that you're going to be available so that, you know, if there's any need, and I look forward to that. But again, wish you luck. I hope your golf game gets improved to your liking. And take it easy on your hubby.
I will try. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Sherry, I just want to say, thank you, your strong, distinct wisdom that you carried out in every meeting that I was part of in the last two years. Helped me learn as a new board member quickly and adequately to get up to speed on things. So I appreciate that about you very much. Wish you the very, very best and enjoy your retirement, please. Don't be too available to everyone. Because Jen's going to do a rock star of a job, so thank you.
Sherry, it's an understatement to say that you've taught me a lot coming onto the board as a newbie just about four years ago now. You know, I, I had no idea the financing that goes on to such a huge, basically jewel for a town. And, you know, everything that you've taught me and better understanding, it's absolutely invaluable and I thank you so much. One thing that did bother me, what you said tonight, and it's more of a question for your hubby, is you said the only two things in your closet is a yearbook and that jacket. I don't believe you.
No, from high school, from high school.
All right, all right. But you're, you're going to be, you're going to be missed and, you know, I can't guarantee, I may not throw a couple of texts your way and be like, "Hey, can you explain this to me?" In the very near future, so thank you.
You, no, I am, because you all probably, you're not aware of this, but twenty, almost twenty-six and a half years ago, Jill and I had babies the same day in the same hospital. We were next-door neighbors in the hospital and we didn't know each other at the time. We met on South End Road one day walking our baby carriages. And she asked me if I was interested in getting involved in a project to put a playscape at Rec Park. And she said, "My sister's helping with it," my older sister. I was like, "Older, okay, sure." So we met, I think we met at your house. And I was in awe of you then because I knew nothing about grant writing. I knew nothing about fundraising. I knew nothing about nothing, but you knew numbers back then. And Sherry, I have been in awe of you since that day. And anytime I had a number question about the budget, when I got on the board and realized that you were the Director of Business and Finance, I knew that you were superstar. I knew that from the day I met you. And I will miss being able to call you and say, "Sherry, we had a self-insurance meeting and I really didn't understand what they were, could you explain it to me in English, please?" I will miss that, but when you're on the golf course, if I'm outside, make sure you yell over, okay?
And don't say so short. You're the one that wrote the grant to get the Ronald McDonald Foundation grant. That was the biggest.
I kind of helped. I, I helped, I helped, I helped. But, well, in any event, thank you for all you've done.
Sherry, so, so you, you haven't always been the most popular person. Because you had to do a lot of very difficult work. And the one thing that you did do, you may not have been popular, but you were credible. And you were honest and you brought forward the information that everybody needed to know and it was real information. It wasn't made up. They weren't fake numbers. They were real numbers year after year after year, which helped bring this district to where it is today. I mean, I, sitting with you on finance for the past several years, it is, it is funny because if you ask Sherry a question, she always has the answer. And people, they say, "Never say never and never say always." She always has the answer because she always does her homework. So she comes to meetings, she's always available. When you speak in front of the finance board, when you speak in front of the council and you bring information about the budget. I remember in the beginning, when I first got on the board, there were a lot of questions, right? But, but people understood when you put the information out there, people would pepper you with questions and you'd have the answers. And so it became a level of credibility for you, but it became a level of credibility for this board. And that I thank you for tremendously because it shows you, you know, you say it's the board's budget. You put so much work into that budget. It's the board's budget, but you put it together. So thank you for that. And thank you for all the work you've done for all these years. I remember, I didn't know you back then, but I remember hearing about you from my father. He was on this board. And he talked about you and when I got on this board and I started learning what you did and what you really do know, he was right. You know a lot and you did a lot for this district. So a long and healthy retirement to you and to your family. Thank you for everything you've done for me and for this town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, Sherry, as you can well imagine, we all thank you and we are going to take a five-minute recess so that the board can congratulate the girls individually. And our young man in the back and talk to Sherry's husband and tell him how he must behave now with a retired wife. So thank you, five-minute recess, okay? Thank you. Reconvene the meeting? So if I may have a approval of the minutes from the June tenth meeting, may I have a motion? All those favor? Motion carries. Next we have full communications. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Please come up to the podium. You have three minutes.
Probably shorten that to two minutes.
Do I have to state my address along with my name?
Yeah, you name in your address.
Okay, Bianca's Pataro. Bianca's Pataro, thirty-seven Mountain Pond Road, Southington, Connecticut.
Nicholas Mandine, one forty-six Butter Nut Lane, Southington, Connecticut.
So hello, everyone. It's so great to see both old and new faces. For those of you who don't know, my name is Bianca and this is Nick. And we were the Southington Board of Ed Reps our senior year, which was two thousand nineteen. So we're here per tradition to kind of give a little update. We're sorry it took so long. Things have been kind of crazy as we all know. And this past year has been all online for both me and Nick. I stayed home for the entire academic year and I was kind of like in hibernation mode in the wintertime, but I'm fully vaccinated now and so was Nick. So it's great to see all of you. I recently did double major. I declared this past year, so I'm double majoring in both human rights and poli sci. So that's really, really exciting. And I have decided that I do want to go to grad school. I'm thinking law school. And I do want to specialize in like human rights law or something like that. And so this summer... And I do want to specialize in like human rights law or something like that. And so this summer, I decided to intern with the Integrated Immigrant and Refugee Services, nonprofit in New Haven. And I'm also working at FLARE where I see Mr. Deranowski. He's so graciously reminded of the meeting tonight. I saw him yesterday. It was my first official shift. And he was there and he told me to come by. So thank you so much for that, because I almost forgot. And that would have been so terrible, because it was, I wanted to see all of your faces. So, yeah, it's my little update. It's been a great year. Definitely excited to go back though and be back in person, have some sense of normalcy. But thank you so much.
Great seeing you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, so I got a text from Bianca at around 9:00 AM this morning. So I kind of just decided I'll come show up and see how it goes. But, yeah, it's been a great experience. I'm also up at UConn. I am going, I've been taking a lot of summer and winter courses at like Kung Cis. Trying to get as many credits out of the way as possible. And I'll actually be graduating a year early this year. So I'm excited about that. And then I'm hopefully attending UConn for my MSA and doing my CPA at the same time. And then this summer, I'm working in New York City, but not really, like, kind of like virtually. So in transaction advisory services at Cone Resnick. And then next summer, I'm working at PWC in the audit department.
Thanks for sharing. Great seeing you. Thank you for coming. Any other communications from the public?
My name is Susan Zabahansky, 28 Working Street in Plantsville. I'm back again to discuss the masks. I know you guys implemented a restarting, you know, program for the fall, saying that they're op, would be optional, but based again on the, whatever's the recommendation. I did send, I did speak with Ms. Carmody, and I just wanted to reiterate that the mask mandate in the state of Connecticut, according to the newest mandate dictates that the Commissioner of Educa, of Education and the Commissioner of Early Childhood have the final say on guidelines. And I want to mention again that it is simply a guideline for masks. There are two towns that have implemented resolutions or decrees that they don't want their students masked in the fall. I mentioned also that my daughter and her classmate have gone to school in Southington without a mask mandate in the classroom at a private school in town. And they did so very successfully. And I'm encouraging you guys on the board to do the same, to make a resolution saying we don't want masks on our children. It can be done successfully. And it's not in the best interest of the children to have masks on 24/7 while they're in school. That's one thing. Also, last week, we heard from a fellow citizen and also from a fellow board member about the budget and about the federal funds that were going to be allocated. And she asked that they not be used for operational expenses because we will be creating a cliff. And I think it would be irresponsible for the Board of Education, knowing that they only have a $400,000 increase in their budget. It is an increase. I hate hearing it, saying we got cut, our budget got cut. The budget did not get cut. There's an increase in the budget next, for the next school session. And we should be responsible to come back to the table and not use federal funds to create a cliff. If you do that, you're placing, you're knowingly placing a burden on the taxpayers come time this money runs out. So it should not be used for operational expenses. It can be used for other things. And then in turn, you need to make responsible budget, budgetary decisions based on what funds you have. We all have to do that. We all have to look at our budget and go, okay, these are the funds we have. Now we have to make them, make, make, do with that. So I'm asking that you responsibly go back and look at this. So we don't create a cliff for the taxpayers. Because if we do that knowingly, that's going to fall on you. And we're voters. We'll hold you accountable. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Kristen Ritchie of 270 Chesterwood Terrace. I'm a mom of a soon-to-be kindergartner who's currently in preschool mandated to wear a mask for nine-hour days. As you are all aware, the ability to justify the governor's school mask mandate has drastically diminished. COVID-19 cases, hospitalizations, and deaths among the Connecticut population are at a lowest level since the pandemic began. Due primarily to a high vaccination rate, higher numbers of individuals with natural immunity from previous infections, as well as the seasonality of the virus. Not to mention, schools have fared substantially better statistically than the general population throughout the entire pandemic, mainly due to the grace of God sparing children from severe illness. I emailed a letter I sent to Governor Lamont and others to all of you in late May. That letter details over 40 consequences of masking children, including physical symptoms and health impairments, behavioral impacts, psychological impacts, social emotional impacts, and developmental and academic impacts. These concerns parents have about mask requirements should not be taken lightly. These are not simply complaints about school policies. The mask mandate has become more consequential to children's health beyond any health benefit they may have ever only potentially provided. Some of these impacts will have lasting and possibly irreversible consequences, especially for the younger children. The World Health Organization guidance for children aged 6 to 11 is masks are recommended in classrooms only if the school is in a locality with widespread transmission. And then only after consulting with parents and weighing the potential impact on learning and psychosocial development. Clearly, Connecticut schools should not require masks, according to the WHO, an organization most of the world follows. So why is it? Is responsibility of the board and school administration to act in the best interest of children? While thousands of parents have already contacted the governor's office as well as other state agencies, we need boards of ed to raise concerns about the current mask mandate as well. I am desperately asking you to stand with and for our children alongside us parents, so children can return to childhood without additional obstacles imposed on them. Assuming the mandate expires, I see in the Southington Schools reopening plan reference to binding guidance from the Connecticut State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health regarding future recommendations or requirements for COVID mitigation strategies. How is guidance binding? Isn't guidance just that, simply guidance that may or may not be implemented? Perhaps historically, the schools have followed guidance issued by these bodies, but were not in historic times. We are coming out of a pandemic and need to make decisions accordingly in the interest of our students' health and development, total health, not just the viral component of health. This issue is not and should not be political. So if the Board of Ed expresses concerns with the current mask mandate to the governor's office, that should not reflect negatively on the reputation of Southington Schools nor impact state funding. I represent hundreds of other parents here tonight, as I ask you to request that the governor end the consequential mask mandate, just like Brookfield and Fairfield Boards of Ed recently did. If you need copies of those, I can get those letters to you. Time is of the essence here, because while students may be out of school for the summer, campgoers and preschoolers and even three-year-olds in daycare are wearing masks for eight-plus-hour days in the summer heat. Have you done that? I would highly doubt it. So please stand with us against the governor's mask mandate under his emergency powers in this non-emergency circumstance we are now in. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Any other members of the public who would like to speak? And if you two could please just sign your name on the paper that's on the podium, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll just speak first. Richard Cooper, 79, Barborough Lane, Plantsville, Connecticut. Normally I don't write things down, but I felt like I really had to for this to make sure I don't go off the rails. This whole, this whole board's purpose is to bridge this board's whole purpose is to be a bridge between citizens and the schools. It's supposed to increase trust. On May 27th, this board eroded my trust. It was the first Board of Ed meeting I had ever tried to take part in after over 20 years of living in this town. Somehow, a citizen who is a complete stranger to me had a whole essay written about me, ready to go for immediately after my communication was written. Unfortunately, I had issues attending that meeting. That letter had, it attacked me and it had nothing to do with the Board of Ed at all. It really left me to wonder. I also believe that the minutes from that date, this is just my opinion, but I believe they are deceitful and unethical. For transparency's sake, I want to let you know that I did file an ethical complaint against two members of this board for what they did on that day. There are many other issues I'd like to bring up, but I'll have to save those for another time, because I know everyone's busy and I don't want to waste time. So let me get right into it, what I really meant on May 27th. Our society is digital. It's not becoming digital. It is digital. And it's only increasing. Palm of my hand, right here, okay? I have and contain easy access to essentially all mankind's collective knowledge and information. Indeed, a modern child has easier access to more knowledge and information than the wisest philosophers and scientists had for most of human history. It's all thanks to technology like computers, the internet, and social media platforms. It's, it's so important to be able to decipher the truth from lies, facts from opinions, authenticity from scams, scrutiny, and harassment. All of our students should be proficient in general computer use, navigating the internet, and that should be starting from a very early age. Not being able to use a computer in the 21st century is the equivalent to not knowing how to read. Given that, I hope our school focuses on civics heavily. I hope we have programs that talk about how to be a good digital citizen. I particularly, I especially hope we are doing more to engage with our disengaged youth population. Last I checked, it was above the state average, somewhere around over 6%. And may have changed, because it was, I believe, from 2017. But I'm sure there's more we can be doing politically and civically for our youth, to get them politically involved. No one should be afraid to come to the Board of Ed to speak their mind or express their opinions. I'll leave it at that. Thank you for the hard work that you do. I hope that you take my comments in good faith and for what they mean.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Mrs. Clark, do you have?
I have an email that asks to be included in the public communication. It is, I will send you a copy. I have a copy of it for you. Dear members of the Board of Education, I am writing today in response to articles in local papers about an outcry over a recent film shown in the middle schools. While I am not privy to that exact film, I want to wholeheartedly throw my support behind teaching our children love, acceptance, allyship, and diversity. I want our community to raise kind children who will be empathetic and understanding towards others and celebrate differences. More explicitly, I support and encourage our schools to discuss LGBTQIA+ issues, racial, cultural, ethnic histories, and allyship. Respectfully, Kristi Sedowski, 46, Luciano Drive in Southington.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, that brings us to communications from the Board of Ed. If I, I don't, I know this is going to be part of the administrative report, but I would just like to comment on Southington High School's beautiful graduation Friday night. It, it was wonderful. The weather cooperated. The students, without a practice, did very well. And Mr. Pepe really was impressive. Seriously, I mean, I was really impressive. Usually don't like to say that about him, but I was. He knew and was telling the Board of Ed members the students' names, which section they were coming from. And it was just dynamite. So I thank the high school staff. I thank Mr. Arroyo for organizing it. And I'm sure Steve has more to say about it later. Any other Board of Ed members, communications?
I would just like to make a comment real quick about the all-night grad party that myself and Joe and James stayed out a little past our bedtime. But it was great. Little pet pass. They kept the guys out late. But it was great to see the students having such a great time. It's so well organized. So thanks to the organizers for that grad party. And they had a great time. Like, what a great place to have that. Really what a great environment to have that in.
Did they go on rides and stuff?
They did, till 11 o'clock. Joe wouldn't go on one. But it was great. So thank you to everyone who organized that for the students. And our community was great.
Say, did I see your hand up yet?
So following up on what Mrs. Carmody said, it was pretty impressive, Mr. Pepe, that you knew every kid's name. I mean, the whole, you knew that senior class like the back of your hand. That's a big senior class. So it says a lot about you and your commitment to the students. So thank you for that. And I think, I think we've said it before, but best of luck in your, in your new role. So I'm wearing a mask tonight, today. And I'm wearing it because, as I said at the last meeting, the mask mandate ends July 19th. So my feeling is, is that if we're asking students and staff to wear it for eight hours a day, seven hours a day, whatever it may be, I think we should wear it as a modeling of the behavior, which is why I'm wearing it tonight. I'm double vaccinated. My family's double vaccinated. I felt it was important to wear it tonight to show commitment to the students, so that we're not asking them to do something that we don't do ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Any other Board?
If I could just build off of what Mrs. said about the all-night graduation. The different raffle prizes that were there, iPads, all sorts of electronics. It was amazing, the amount of support that the community, not only the food. I'm telling, again, we could really take notes from such a positive experience as far as the school system working with our public partners in the community. And it was absolutely dynamite, dynamite to see. I, I didn't get hypnotized, which I'm a little proud of myself for. Had the willpower to keep it, keep it together.
Did you behave?
Allegedly, yeah. But it was, it was such a positive experience. I certainly hope that that becomes just like the motorcade. I, I hope that this becomes a more permanent option for, for the kids to be able to do, especially when the weather permits. So it was dynamite. Bravo to all the parents that, that put in their time.
They work really hard, do they?
Oh, they do, yep.
Any other Board members? All right, moving right along, we'll go to the administration. Somebody asked me?
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. I think you covered the graduation, you know, very nicely. And that's pretty much what I wanted to say. No, no, absolutely. It's your prerogative. I, I just wanted to acknowledge all of the high school staff, you know, certainly Mr. Pepe. But the, there's so many workers behind the scenes, right up to the maintenance crew who's there well after hours, taking everything down and apart and, you know, bringing things back to, to restore things back to normal. So it's a team effort, as we always say. And it's a lot of little things that happen behind the scenes. But there were a lot of people that contributed. So we just want to thank them all. And I'm afraid to go individually to the different groups, because I know I would forget someone and I don't want to do that. I, I believe it was a team effort. Summer school, as we talk about team efforts, unlike it's ever been. It's a large undertaking, as you can imagine, with a lot of the, what we call remedial academic remediation and support, as well as the enrichment. We are coordinating, we're using grant funds for transportation. We've never been able to provide transportation, but we believe that's a huge game changer in terms of equity for kids who may have working parents and wouldn't be able to attend. And so coordinating bus routes this time of year, at the end of the year, to be able to start right after the Fourth of July. Coordinating all of the different teaching staffs, the use of all the facilities. We have crossing guards in play, because there's so many students coming. And, and I really have to give a giant shout out to Mr. DiStefano, our summer school director, who's been doing it for, you know, for several years. And Suzie Velser, who's, you know, coordinating extended school year. Just a Herculean task with so many more students attending and so many more moving parts at play this year. And they're doing a tremendous job. Device collection, along the lines and theme of team effort. Last year at this time, we didn't have 6,500 devices that we have today. And so bringing a lot of the devices back into district, you know, doing a lot of the imaging, cleaning, maintaining, inventory around all of those, getting all the devices back from the seniors. Huge help to Skip at the high school and the high school technology team for getting all those devices. uh, for getting all those devices back, as well as all the students who are leaving the district and transferring out to the school, going out, like, to... Making sure we get all of those devices back, again, inventorying them, imaging them, and getting them ready for deployment. That'll be a, a big task for us this summer. Um, but, but certainly great work by that team. Um, and then lastly, uh, it's not a secret, so I get a chance to speak and say thank you publicly to Cherry. Um, Joe, I think you said it nicely to say that she taught me a lot is an understatement as well. Um, it's been a pleasure working alongside of you. Um, I know I maybe, you know, poked a few jabs at you last week in good fun, uh, but on a serious nature, um, you know, I've been in, in two different districts prior to being here, and, and she's the best that I've worked with, and, you know, she knows her stuff. Um, and so, with, as a dad of three daughters, if, if any of my daughters can project the confidence and strength and knowledge that Cherry projects, then I'm going to be a pretty happy guy, so thank you for your partnership over these years. Um, and then lastly, not sitting with us yet, just yet tonight, um, but true to form, at our next board meeting, Jennifer and Frank, um, will be making the leap, um, or in Frank's case, the step, um, up, up, up here. But, um, you know, to, to my leadership team, and I'm really excited for both of them. Um, I think we're all equally in, in a, in a similar place right now, transitioning out of one existing role and making sure we do everything we need to do to leave that in a great place for their, that successor, and also assimilating into a new role at the same time, so it's kind of a, it's a hard spot to be in, because in many positions like this, there's a honeymoon period. People don't know who you are, they want to get to know you, and they maybe stay away a little bit. And I think in our experience right now, I can speak for them as well, nobody's staying away because they know us, and so anything they need, want, or have, you know, require help with, they're coming right to us, so it's been extremely busy since school got out, uh, but I'm really excited and, um, to have them up here with us at our next meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'm, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
With the device returns, what kind of condition, I mean, what did you find in terms of quality condition?
Very, you know, we did have some devices here and there that were either nicked up or cracked screen or something, but by and large, tremendous. The kids did a great job taking care of them. Um, yeah, we were very excited about that, um, for sure. The kids, they get it, you know? I think the kids, the older kids, it was mostly seniors that we collected them back from, had, it might have been a different story if we had young, young kids taking them back and forth all year, um, because, you know, throwing them in their backpacks and stuff, and maybe not knowing how sensitive they are, they might have had more of a, you know, risk there, but the older kids did a nice job.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving right along, Colling, we have the, um, elementary facilities committee report, June twenty-second.
Oh, let me get it here. Okay, um, in an effort to be transparent with the town, we invited, um, our economic development director to the meeting, Lou Perillo, to go over the scenarios that we had developed, um, to see what the economic impact was to the town, um, depending upon which school we looked at, um, and he had some very interesting points that he shared with us, um, to give us more food for thought, for more discussion, because this, we're still in the beginning stages of discussion, and we just want to make sure that we have input from everybody who could possibly be impacted, uh, by this. I think you all now have a, uh, a sheet that was passed out, I don't know if you saw it, uh, because afterwards, we talked about our pre-referendum, what do we have here, pre-referendum summer work, I apologize, I had it printed out with notes, and now I don't have my notes. Um, but the scope of the work that we have to do this summer, along with the funding sources, is brought to you, you have it here, um, on that sheet, so if anyone has any questions regarding that, Steve will be more than happy to answer them.
Nice.
There's a ti, just so you know, there was a change in the schedule, um, the estimate for preliminary geotechnical borings and report, it was reduced down to...
The overall price is correct, I think we have, there's a little parenthesis, uh, he's on the side, this is twelve thousand per site, and if you saw that, that doesn't add up to the overall cost, so it's not twelve thousand per site. The overall cost projected for that is, is accurate.
Is that your report?
Yes, unless anybody has any questions. Uh, Mr. McDance, do you want to say anything about it?
No, I think we covered it pretty well. It was, you know, talking with, uh, with Lou was helpful for us, it gave us other things to consider that maybe we hadn't, um, been aware of. Um, debriefing from the town council was just an opportunity to revisit the timelines associated with this project, and that's where we talked about that August meeting with OSCGNR, and, you know, the importance of having information for them, because to just show up with maybe our best guess of what makes the most sense without having done any preliminary work would be a waste of everyone's time. And so, the challenge for us, as you can see, is we don't have a July meeting, we only have one meeting in August, so if we had not had a facilities committee meeting to talk about the summer work that needs to occur, it's lost time. Um, and as we talked about at the town council meeting, they're going to be looking for a recommendation at some point in the fall, because they have to do their due diligence, and then we have to go to bond council and all of the other stuff that needs to happen, before it can even be considered for referendum, and as Mr. Choda said, he absolutely wants us to be a referendum item in November twenty-twenty-two. So, we're working backwards off of about a March deadline for twenty-twenty-two to try and, you know, um, get to where we need to be with the, a decision on a scenario. Uh, Mr. Brown had talked about it as well, it can be heard in the scene, but, you know, there's going to be community engagement around this and input that needs to be sought, so there's going to be some time for that as well, so not only with the, uh, pre-referendum work, or we'll call it, um, there's going to be an opportunity to have a dialogue about the, the different scenarios, and especially the one that the board chooses and what that means for the community.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, okay. Did you say something, Colling?
No, I, I, okay.
Um, old business, town government communications, I don't have anything, does, no one does, moving on to an affiliated, uh, Joe?
Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, move to approve the grant-funded Step Youth Advisor position as presented by the administration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, my second motion, uh, move to approve the duration of the contract for the Director of Operations as agreed upon by the Board and Administration, uh, with amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Uh, new business, scoping, uh, agreement approvals for the elem- elementary facilities commi- uh, committee. That need a motion?
No, no, there's no motion on that, so, um, but I did want to just take a moment to recognize, um, Charles Warrington, John Kopples from Colliers International. You know, I know some of the work uses their jargon on that grid, so I wanted them to be here tonight in case you had any questions about what is that? What does that mean? What does that do? What does that look like? Um, so they are certainly available if you have questions, and, and if you do, I would just ask that they come up to the podium to answer.
No, it just said, you know, what is a geotechnical boring, which, you know?
Just appreciate you being here if there's any questions. That's very kind of you, thank you. Any, does any, do any Board members have any questions? Because, believe me, they have the answers.
Nope.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um, next is, uh, the resolution for the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DMHAS, and the town of Southington Board of Education.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, a resolution as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, uh, next is the approval of additional special education FTEs.
I'll make the motion, uh, move to approve the additional special education positions of one FTE teacher for EASE and point five FTE for BCBBA district-wide.
Second.
I have second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any questions on that, anyone?
Nope.
Okay. Continuing discussion, approval of the stellar lease. I'm going to give the motion, Joe.
Sure, uh, move to approve the new lease agreement for stellar program space.
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, I noticed that the... You know, for this paperless society, I got more paper here than I need to do.
Do you want one?
No, 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 um, I guess, uh, the, it's an additional thirty-seven thousand dollars per year. Okay, um, that, that's going to be coming out of the grant.
Yes.
Okay, IDEA grant. Um, how long is this lease for?
I, I don't know how long the lease is.
It's a...
Yeah, it's a three-year lease was the last one, um, you know, the thirty-seven thousand would be an annual increase.
It'll be for the, I think we're only in the first year of the lease currently.
Yeah.
We're in year one of a three-year lease, and so they'll, they'll need to be an addendum if the board approves this to the current lease document for the change in space and the added cost.
Okay, well, I, I, we're almost doubling the size of the space.
That's in, in, absolutely, which is the only reason why we're looking to do it. So I have Mrs. Aresco and Mrs. Kellauer here today to explain that to you.
I know it's available, just to get a, get more space because it's available. If we don't have enough students...
Yeah, it's, so I'll, if, if you want to hear from them, the justification and a little bit about the why, um, they're, that's, I asked them to be here tonight for that purpose.
Okay, so, um, sorry about that. Um, currently, the space that we have, um, houses the number of students that are in the stellar program. I know that Mrs. Aresco is here, who can speak?
Could you speak me closer to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
That's better, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Um, so, within the budget this year, we did look to increase the size of the stellar program by adding an additional teacher, because we do have a number of students that are coming up. Um, the current space that we are in, which is twenty-six oh-nine square footage, and we are essentially doubling that, would provide for additional access. We have students with mobility issues that will be a challenge coming into the program this year that we may have not been able to program for effectively. Um, I'm going to ask Mrs. Aresco to just say a few words, um, since she does oversee the program and has some more intimate knowledge of that. Thank you.
So our current program, in the space we have, we have ten students full-time, and next year we are going to start with twenty-three. So our current space that we started with, um, is two classrooms, a shared hallway, and then we have what used to be a doctor's office that we use for activities of daily living. So we share a public hallway right now. The space that we're looking at has all contained space, so we wouldn't have public share. We'd have, um, accessible bathroom space, we'd have, um, corridor access to the building, but also directly out into the, there's like an alley down to Southington Coffee Shop, so we'd have that space. And it gives us room to grow, because with some of the state laws changing for students, we're going to have more and more students that we're going to be able to keep in our community and access this program. So the program started with five students at Lincoln College, next year we're going to start with twenty-three.
Ah, wonderful.
Wow, that's great.
Great, so, um, what's the prospect of having to add additional staff?
Um, for next year, we'll be fine, because we just added a teacher in this budget cycle. So, um, I, I don't anticipate a teacher for a few years, like, I think our existing staff will be able to manage the students that I project into the program for a couple of years at least.
I did have a chance to go over and see the space, um, and see the difference between what they have now and what they would be getting, and I think she's being kind by saying it's a shared space. It's a shared hallway that leads to the back of, is it, the coffee house? Um, with a shared elevator, but when you have students with mobility issues, which there, there are several in the program, to get them down that hallway and in that elevator when there's other members of the public also waiting to use the elevator, because our space is currently on the third floor, which was all that was available at the time we used it. So now that it's open, and he, they were very good to us, regardless of the property taxes and the property values right now, they, they did, um, agree to the same price per square foot that we were currently paying in the, in the other space for the preferred space, which is a ni, it's a nice gesture on their part.
Now, utilities are part of the lease?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions, really appreciate it.
So we need to vote?
You have, we have to vote on it? We have to vote on it, yes, we do have the motion and second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And one last one, Joseph.
Uh, move to rescind the May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one decision to award the concrete demolition and installation of new concrete flooring project based on EZIQC pricing.
Second.
And this is in retrospect to the SHS Fitness Center. Just so it'll be clear.
So do I have a second on that?
Yeah.
Uh, questions, discussions, okay, questions?
Uh, yes, I know we, um, I, I know there's not a major impact to funds, because we do have the extra funds, but originally we were, um, uh, budgeting thirty-eight thousand dollars. And, uh, now we're up to, the low bid was what, fifty thousand? Why such a discrepancy? Did we have enough information early on to get pricing for budget?
I'd like to invite Mrs. Mellett to the podium. She's been kind of spearheading this project along with Mr. Romano. Um, and, you know, we tried to take quick action at our last finance committee meeting with the hopes of using the consortium bidding, um, without having that finalized. However, once she saw the pricing there and knew that there was a concern, they chose to bid it. So I'll let Mrs. Mellett kind of give you more information on the, on the information.
Sure, in the budget, um, in the fall season, Mr. Romano, is this on? It's, Mr. Romano was, um, involved with preparing the bid price. We had two vendors come in and look, one gave us a quote on the demolition and removal, and one on pouring a new slab. And he had a second price, um, for the whole project, and the average of the two is where we came up with the thirty-eight thousand, which was on the budget. As you see, the EZIQC price came in at almost seventy-six thousand dollars. I, I sent a, a memo to the, um, board beforehand, Dave, if you had seen my email that was sent on my behalf by Teresa and Steve. The EZIQC price came in at seventy-six thousand dollars. A lot of it is due to the problems with COVID in the supply chain and the, um, labor workforce is driving prices up. So when we saw that price, we did go out to bid, um, some of the local people came in, nobody from Southington bid on this project, so there's no preferred bidder, um, uh, factor here. But, uh, the people that came, uh, in communication with Mr. Romano had, um, you know, some scheduling problems, and we're trying to get this done quickly, so he was able to work with these companies that came, they gave us a bid, and as you can see, there was a wide variety of pricing on the bids. Uh, Tobacco and Sons from Bristol is somebody that Mr. Romano is familiar with, and we checked their references, so we also reached out to a lot of the CASBO members today, um, through the Lift Serv, and we got back quite a few responses on recent bids that they've been doing. Um, there was one instance of a fire alarm system installation where they had budgeted, including a fifty thousand dollar contingency, they had a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar budget, and the prices came in at three-seventy-five up to six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So there, and there were two other examples from, and I don't want to misquote, um, they're over in my email, but a lot of the other industry, other, other schools in our districts are seeing similar increases in the prices. So, it is unfortunate, but, um, if we're going to move the project forward, this is, um, the best that we could come up with at this time with the bid.
Okay, very good, thank you.
That answer your question, Mr. D?
Yeah.
So we had the motion and the second, and now we have to vote, is that correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Daronowski?
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a second motion.
So the second part of the, um, the demolition, so we rescinded that. Um, the second portion, move to award bid twenty-twenty-two dash one zero eight for the demolition, removal, and installation of concrete slab at Southington High School Fitness Center to Tobacco and Sons builders in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars with an add alternate of three thousand.
Second.
Uh, any other questions on that? So we have a motion, we have a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I think I can go to Mr. Daronowski?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. I asked Joe.